Holly to the table.
Come on, Holly. Come on over.
Come on down.
Let Matt sit up in the back forty for a while.
Good. I'm trying to find my agenda. I don't think I need it. It's a workshop. Okay, so our last meeting, we went all the way through capital, which is very unusual at this time in the game that we have gotten all the way through the budget. So I think tonight was designed. Um, no. I think we're good. Um. Oh, Michael, what my first rodeo. So I think tonight was designed for to drill down to more specific questions or concerns that we may have. Probably in capital, but if we need to go back, then we can, but let's start with capital for now, if we could. So I'll open the floor up for any questions. As appropriate, let's start with anything capital related to public safety. You can answer the fire questions too, right? Um, 1:30. And as a reminder, this is very informal, so.
Eighteen patrol cars?
So the first, yes, so the first would be the eighteen patrol cars. And then will be slated to purchase cars for the next five years?
Three.
Sorry. We're gonna do a full fleet replacement in three years. Any questions on that? Yes, sir. Mr. Black, how are you tonight?
Doing great. Hope y'all are.
We are.
Good. I just had a question on these eighteen patrol cars and nine ninety. Is that fully equipped, George? Everything?
Yes, sir.
That's about fifty-five thousand dollars per vehicle. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure. I thought that was correct for eighteen of them and nine ninety for this year, and then you got some slated for twenty-three, four, five, and then twenty-six also to bring the fleet up to date.
Yes, sir.
And this includes fuzzy dice and country air fresheners.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Gold shoes.
That's a compliment.
Not at all.
Heating and air conditioning.
That's right. Thank you, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Black. And as a reminder, our fleet is very old and our cars have a lot of mileage on them, which sometimes isn't a bad thing, but when the cars are old and there's mileage and repairs tend to cost more and more and more. It just makes sense. At this point in the game, we probably should have done it several years back, so this is something.
Vehicles, are they still Dodges?
What's that, Mr. Black?
Are these still Dodgers that we're getting?
We're looking into the SUVs, looking at either the Ford Explorers or the.
Mr. Black, at the time that they make the purchase, it's probably gonna be a financial decision at the end of the day of if one maker. Yeah, whether it's a Durango or a Ford for the SUVs.
It was gonna be through state bid.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, like I said, I know they get, they go out and send them out for bids for different manufacturers, so. But picture shows that I think a Dodge on here, I don't care whatever they can use the best and they're comfortable with.
Then on the SUVs, they'll be looking at Fords or whatever. Maybe in line with that.
That's fine. I don't have a problem.
With these vehicles, they have the, for those officers with the dog, they have a button they can push, let the dog out automatically.
Well, we bought that stuff yesterday. All our vehicles are equipped with that in the hot dog system.
Louisiana saved a cop's life, officer's life.
Absolutely.
I tore it, let the dog out. He was getting jumped, pushed the button, grabbed the other car, didn't have it, so.
Right, yeah, they're, they come with that, the hot dog system, which is if it gets too hot or the fans come on and the alarms go off unless they're, they're not working.
I think another concern is the fact that a lot of our vehicles are left idle for long extended periods, and that's engine time, so that also goes into the aging process.
Right, right. The only ones that should be doing that are the K-9s. It shouldn't be the regular patrol cars, it shouldn't be either, unless they're on the call or something, but they're at the police department, they've been waiting for months, they're supposed to be cut off.
Okay.
Let me get this fired up so I can enlarge my print as someone suggested.
I don't know what you're talking about.
It gets worse.
I got some brand new glasses yesterday and they're awesome. They're like double the magnifying my old pair.
I'm gonna have to take mine off to read.
I had new glasses, tall as forty.
And then remind me, so we're this budget, there's no K-9 purchase? It'll be in the next budget? Or we've got one in this current budget, right?
No, there's not one in this one. We, we've got three right now. We've got two that are training because one of the handlers left. We replaced his dog, we replaced the handler, and then we've got the new dog that's got a handler.
They replaced Paco, that dog?
Yes, sir. He replaced Paco. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Is the other.
I said one is slated for 2024.
But we did buy one last year.
That's what was my question. So we bought one in this fiscal current.
That's correct.
In addition to the one that replaced Paco.
No, we replaced Paco.
With that one.
So we got three right now.
And that's, is that how many we normally have?
We usually have four, but right now with the young.
We're okay. Cause I knew we'd, yeah.
I think right now, three, we can work with three until they're all trained up and ready to go.
So the newest one we've got is not officially trained to his handler yet to be on patrol, or he is?
No, no, we've only got one dog that's actually trained to work the road with the handler, and that's Kraus. Maui was a lot of Hughes' dog. He left and we gave him to Thomas Fazio right now, what we're doing, so we're not sending him to a training class. We're letting Krausy teach him because he's had a lot of training in that, in that aspect of training the dogs and the handlers. So they're, they should be ready to certify at the end of the month, and then Lucas Kramer has been on. I keep saying.
Is that the new one?
That's the new one. I can't even ask today, but he has him. He should be ready, I think by mid May, and that's one, that was the green dog that, and the handler trained from beginning to end with each other.
And Rose.
That's the fourth dog that we don't have.
Yeah, but I mean, we had him. Did y'all decide to? We, like I say, the doctor, I called and talked to the doctor and everything initially. The doctor said from the last time I saw him, he was good to go. Well, come to find out, the last time he had seen him was, we get the dogs checked every six months. It'd been over a year since he had seen him. So what we did was we made an appointment for him to bring the dog back. We took it to the vet and he checked it out. And they sent him to Upstate Veterinary. Doctor Presley, he works for Gravel County, he's the medic for the K-9 team, and he did a check on him and said if he had any work in him, it'd probably be a year or so by the time he got a handler, trained up with a dog, it would be time to retire everyone, because he's, he said he could fill the pocket in the hips and things like that. So we still carrying him or is he be allowed to, we're in the process of.
Finalizing all that.
He's gonna be retired out in the same process with Paco. We'll present to council for action. The same thing will occur this time. During this fiscal year.
Which is too big.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, okay.
So the replacement won't be around until 2024?
Yes, sir.
There will be no reduction of services as it relates to K-9.
No, we've got, there'll be, there'll be three shifts that just got it, but we have round the clock coverage to where if there's nobody here, they're on call. And like I say, if they're on vacation and they're on call, they reassign it to somebody else, so we've got 24-hour coverage for the dog. I'm sorry, I cut you in.
No, I cut you off. I was just gonna say, but worst case scenario, if we needed to add another dog, I mean, the funding would be there for purposes. Yeah, I mean, so it's not like a major budget problem if we had to do that. Right, Mr. Madden? Well, cause that funding comes from, um.
Is it the four? It has in the past, but it's gonna change how that's going, going on about right now. With the Gravel County.
There have been some changes to the way.
In the past, it was from the forfeiture line. Okay, any more questions on police cars or K-9s? Um, what you got, Chief?
That's it.
That's what I was gonna say. That's all I got highlighted for you.
The rest is fire and public safety, I believe. That's all you have in, that's all you have in capital.
I made a thing work on the handling of those cars.
I know one, but yeah, it's time. All right.
You're okay?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm sweating at my little.
Here. Yes, sir.
Anything else? Cause I gotta grab a little piece of paper last.
No, you need to head down to the, uh, famous city, Lake City.
Lake City, yes, sir. They finally built a lake, well, pond, and they call it a lake now.
Three hours?
Yes, sir.
Made the trip many times.
Yes, sir. Y'all have a good night.
Thanks, Chief. Be safe.
Be careful, man.
All right, so next we have fire, which a lot of that's already been purchased, so.
Yeah.
And a great day.
For the pickup truck.
Pickup truck.
And it should say truck, not trucks. That's one.
First time you can hear it.
Yeah, it is. I think it's word back. Like literally.
It is on page 150. Oh, and the fire extrication.
We just added, didn't we just get a new truck that was in this budget that just came, or have we had that for a few months?
Fire, like the pickup truck?
Yeah, yes, they did.
Yeah. A Ranger.
Is that like the little station truck they keep at the station to do errands and run and all that?
It's for, I believe that one went to a. Lieutenant who's doing. Yeah.
Fire stuff.
Yeah, fire stuff.
I can't think of the term, I'm sorry. Or like inspections and stuff?
Yeah, I think so.
Is that what it is, Brandon? For, like one of the deputies for inspections or?
This is utility trucks. I always use for multiple things, not just for one.
Gotcha.
It's to replace a truck that's a.
Twenty-three-year-old.
Oh, it has ninety thousand miles on it, though.
For a twenty-three-year-old, that's a high mileage person.
Come on, join in, help me get more time.
We're gonna take it into public works and retire one of the trucks that we've been using that's an confiscated one that's falling apart.
Which one is it? Is it the one that used to belong to the dog rev it?
No, the truck we're gonna retire is the one that does the rescue spraying, the black pickup truck.
The one you're getting, the one the dog used to ride in, what was her name? The fire dog.
All right, any issues with that item or questions or concerns? All right, then. That's pretty much all for public safety. So now we've got Matthew can come to the table. I mean, there's.
The extrication, there's the.
Radio repeater.
Radio repeater, I guess.
Those are kinda.
The fire station.
Generator? Fire station, thirty-seven station generator.
There's a bunch of air conditioning, that's one of them for fire.
What line are you looking at, Donnie?
Uh, the fire station number two, HVAC fifteen thousand for this year, 2022, on page one twenty-seven.
Right there. That is not this year, that's next year.
Yes, next year.
Extrication equipment.
Yeah, and the UHF repeater.
Yep. Y'all good? Move to PW. Going once, going twice, mayor. That must not be on your list of questions.
Well, actually, I didn't even get to capital. I started back on the line.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I should have read the recap, but we're good. We'll get it next time. When it's almost driving.
It's not gonna be a five hundred dollar question, is it?
Come on.
Cause they gotta make it work. At the end of the day, it really doesn't matter.
I got that a thousand years ago.
All right, Mr. Fleeman. There's a bunch under your name, but you have a lot of departments.
Which is.
We have all the HVA systems under PW. And.
To give you a little background on that, we, we started about this time last year, kind of assessing, doing asset management. We assessed all of our facilities, all the units when they were installed, the prospective lifespan for each unit, and then we compiled basically a capital improvement for the HVAC for the facilities based on usable lifespan. So rather than running around trying to replace units when they fail, we're being proactive and replacing them when we know that they've passed their usable life. And so this is the first installment of the HVAC replacement program. And some of these units, you know, the lifespans, our prospective lifetime lifespan's like twelve and fifteen years. Some of these are like twenty years old or they're on borrowed time. We struggled this year with parts for some.
I was gonna say it's piecemealing once again, trying just to fix some. We've been talking about this for a couple of years, too.
Twenty twenty-five's gonna be a tidy sum. I mean, it's gotta get done, but I'm just looking at the numbers as it pans out.
Yeah.
Is that the year we have to replace the one with the sports center?
That's the three of us, the three oh five year.
Where's the one in public works?
Three million basketball court. Twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, I think we have to replace the fifty-ton units at the sports center.
What about the public works unit?
Which one, Dale?
Well, it says Culture Center and Public Works were identified as units need to replace, and my thing is if we're gonna vacate public works, how much does that equate to and do it need to be transferred to the new location?
Very good point. The one in public works, I don't have the information from me, but I believe it's ten or fifteen thousand dollars, because it was just a small, small handler. We certainly can, I can get with Brandon on that exact cost of that unit. We can modify this capital line.
And like I said, we might need to, if need be, transfer that to the new location. Instead of, yeah, I hope we don't need it, but if we don't need it there, then that'd be something we could strike off of this one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar figure.
Dale.
Yeah.
The line item, it looks like for, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fleeman, but it looks like it says HVAC system replace, repair, seven thousand dollars. Is that McDougal?
Yeah.
So it's only seven thousand. Yeah, so Holly said we're just gonna keep that in the bank.
Okay, we might need it at the new location. I hope not, but no. Just, just a question.
That's a good question.
If Holly keeps it in the bank, she'll know it.
We lose ya.
I'm here.
Good point, though. Know you're still in it if we're gonna vacate premises.
Hey, then we've got that one man lived.
That one, that's the tank in there. Is it wrong on the spreadsheet?
Yeah.
I was right there, Gator, wrong one here. Where is that one man lived? Right there, right there.
The tank, yeah, that's right. That's right.
Page one thirty-two.
Well, it's different.
One says sixteen, one says nine.
It's sixteen.
Seven thousand. But there's nine down here in 2025, so is that?
Oh, what it was, was we had originally, when we put together the ten-year, it was supposed to be another yard rake this year. And I had spoken with you, it's a three-wheeler that they drag the baseball fields with, and we felt that the one, the Gator that we use to drive around the city, that sprays all the bays and do everything is patched together. We were hoping to, because the field rates we have are in great shape, we would wait until.
On out, and that's that nine thousand expenditure. Okay. Now you got your name.
So your nine thousand is in 2022 right now for a Gator?
Twenty-five, actually.
Well, I'm looking at PW in twenty twenty-two.
And it's sixteen, not nine. On that sheet you're looking at, it should be sixteen thousand. I gotta change it.
And then the nine thousand's correct. That's for the smaller, like four-wheeler.
Field rake.
For this fiscal year, the nine thousand's wrong. It needs to be sixteen thousand.
Got it.
The nine thousand out for 2025 is correct.
That'll be for a three-wheeler or something.
All kinds of works of cell phone.
My kind of math. I think that's all PW. Then we're in sanitation. We get it all?
Yeah. I keep doing that thing. Yeah. Sanitation now.
All right, sanitation. We have a truck.
All this is on the CW.
Yeah, yes, sir. Fleet trucks in all divisions of public works have high mileage, as the vehicles are acquired, the older vehicles being replaced, and they're saying that sanitation needs a reliable truck, which is on page one thirty-four, forty thousand dollars.
No.
Or a pickup truck? Two-wheel drive?
Four-wheel.
Four-door.
See the four doors? I just didn't see the.
Not all for seven?
No.
There we go, did it same time.
One or abandon it.
Yep, two of them.
One more patient.
Six hundred.
Yeah. Sidearm.
That's what I call one.
I did tell you, Mr. Fleeman.
I worry y'all got that. Trying to be correct.
Well, I'm trying to use analogy.
About the crash trucks.
I was surprised that God was like, you know, put it two foot, two foot, two foot, kinda like. And I know today it went all the way out, then he must have hit another lever and it went further out trying to reach a cannon. It must have been six feet, six or seven feet or so.
It can extend a total of twelve feet from the chassis.
Wow.
Wow.
I just, I know who this is. Several weeks I wanted to stop that and say.
You wanna be the king, dude?
No.
Then he had to get out and put a bag in it after he emptied it, sat it back down, got out, put a bag in it, and emptied it again. Efficient, and it's our citizens causing it, we got.
So that's two trucks, approximately six thousand, which, I mean, six hundred thousand, which they came in a little under three last go around. Y'all got a good deal. So that's, again, needed as the city continues to grow and we're trying to become more efficient.
It does cut down on labor costs.
Which is how that all came about to begin with, with anticipating what happens the day we don't have the inmates, and we didn't realize that day was sooner versus later due to a pandemic, so.
Do we anticipate them coming back at any cost?
I told the Department of Corrections last week, they're still gonna send us a contract, but they don't know when they'll be back.
Yeah, I had spoke with them last week, March. They still haven't allowed visitation. So it's been over a year. No one's allowed out, no one's allowed in. Let's see. When we know, anything else, we'll let you know.
If we understand they can't even use prison nurses in their own kitchen. In some of the prisons, yeah. They have limited, they have like, you have like six, we used to have a team. Now they're just, at least in Pickens County, I know somebody who used to work out there, and she was telling me that that's a problem, that they can't, you know. problem, that they can't, you know, what do they do? So a lot of guards are even cooking. Like, that's awesome.
Yeah, I mean, the
That always scare.
Believe season is, is by ordinance and it's twelve falls from November through, uh, or October through March. We, we do put one guy in a truck to kind of drive around the city because this time of the year, people rake all the leaves in their backyards and they bring them out. If we don't suck them up, we get yelled at. So, uh, we, there is no set schedule, but if you put them up, they will get sucked up. Yeah, then a little, yeah, they'll just get thrown in the trash. You gotta remember that we get yelled at before you get yelled at. That's what we talk, now you season. Have we gotten our first two and a quarter, four and a half?
Is it nine or?
Yes, it is.
Well, that's right. It is nine. I guess if we got our first four and a half or nine. Cause I know we're supposed to be in the first half of a hundred thirty days. It could be the end of the year or in the next year before we get the next. And we started putting the plan to set it home and usually go like people like the leaves for like one season.
The CARES Act. Originally came last year, we were unable to get it.
Huge old trees. They threw so many.
So we submitted our request to the state. They wouldn't provide it to any of the cities.
Right.
So we have those expenditures and we're looking at recouping those from the American Recovery Act.
So the, that's, that'd be the revenue replacement piece of it.
Revenue replacement plus potentially looking at our capital.
That's what I'm sitting here thinking, you know, some of these super things that we've got planned, super falls in that.
Side loader due to COVID. So exactly, so what we were thinking, once we get further guidance, which the language that at least Holly and I have seen, they make it so flexible. Um, we're looking at possibly getting all side loaders replaced every next, all our entire fleet with side loaders. So, um, once we get the funding, we'll be able to kind of map out the use for it. And follow the lead of other cities, you know, Grand County wants these roads, you do line their road.
And also we can reimburse some of the salary we've already paid.
Yes, salary of.
So we can put that back into our budget.
Yeah, salaries are well into our.
That goes into the revenue replacement.
Five trucks.
The window wants to, the rollout continues.
What are they expecting final guidance?
I'm not sure. The, the things we've seen has just been kind of hit and miss. Utility waters, I mean, water, sewer, um, first responder, revenue replacement. That's pretty much it. There, there was a sentence that they gave us as a measure stick to use. For.
Trying to figure out how to get them there.
Man. Really makes a case. Don't.
He goes in place.
So I guess once you get guidance, it's possible that these sewer items could, we could use those funds.
That's what I was asking about that.
Yeah. And then once you get guidance, it's going to continue to change, as you know. Um, but.
So excited. It's Christmas for Holly.
I'm like, there's. And then up next, we have two more trucks. One is not like the other as Holly and Holly. Simply because one is three hundred thousand, the other one is sixty-five thousand. So one would be the jetter. And then the other is the, um, just the duly with the crane bed. So.
The duly, that's still.
One is not like the other.
It allows us to service our pumps and our pump stations. Uh, it actually provides for when we do confined space entries, our form of egress. And, uh, it also will be able to tow our sewer jet. Do we have an elephant truck right now?
A what?
Do we have an elephant truck right now?
A utility.
The jetter vacuum truck.
This thing, we have a pull behind, right?
We have two, two full behind jitters, yes.
So we have a very qualified staff. So this would be.
Yes.
Yeah. I think a good investment.
Better than two men in a bucket.
This jet also be able to use to blow up coal burns on the.
Yeah, so the, the other intention with, um, this, this truck would be to the back on will be what we could use to clean out catch basins. Now, um, one of the costs that we were gonna absorb is we had taken the, the street sweeper to through the manufacturer and was like, tell us how much to get this thing working. And, and the bill came back a lot higher than we had anticipated. And they said, we can't even guarantee it. Like, we can do this. It's gonna cost you, I think, what was it, twelve or fourteen thousand dollars? And we can't guarantee it's gonna work. So what we thought in public works was we can use this to clean out catch basins. But what we can do is we can take the street sweeper body off of the chassis and we can mount the old sewer jet on that. And that would allow the street crews to be cleaning coal burns and pipes.
Cool.
So we.
And it'd be something that we can do in-house with, with no, at no cost.
The street sweeper with the, um, COVID funding, that might be something we could. We know we kind of shot it down earlier because of the expense. I guess that'd be another thing we could look at as well.
It's not in the budget.
Not in the, but it has to be in the budget for the, not, not this. I'm saying with the money we're gonna be getting in the next two years or the nine million from this, from the federal government.
So it has to be budgeted in capital.
Right. But it doesn't have to be all spent next year. It could be the following.
No, it has to twenty twenty-four.
But we can't accept the money then because it's not in the budget.
No.
No, you don't.
You don't need that right now.
No, you don't. You gotta accept, you gotta take. Well, didn't we modify the ten year? Well, you, or you don't have to, or you can reimburse yourself.
No, but I was trying to say that we modified the ten year to include a street sweeper. That's what we had spoke about.
Wow.
Why?
For another, for that budget year.
I got behind the one.
We don't need it today, but we might need it in the future. Yeah. Like ten.
It might be in that eleven.
I wanted to see what three hundred thousand dollar truck looked like for a street sweeper.
Just.
Home city.
I should have given you an idea on capital before we, it's not in the budget.
So there, yeah, I'm sorry.
Can we just throw out an idea on a capital expenditure consideration in PW?
Yeah.
Street sanitation. I don't, I don't know. I think, I know, one of the things that came up several years ago was the fact we were doing so much brush removal, buying one of our own grinders, these big machines you see on, you just dump it in and it sends out mulch on the other eye, then put it in a tractor trailer and.
That was the last year of conversation.
Yeah, Larry actually did it. Uh, and I think it came back too expensive, but then I see the one down here Mercy Housing is using. It's a lot smaller than the one that we saw on three to five, the Larry I looked at. And is it realistic with our current discussion about limbs and brush, all that, that we get into doing it chipping and not stockpiling it on Jenkins, which is going away and would not stop, Nougat's going away. Why stockpile it over there if we could? Or a little bit, at least to grind it up and chip it. Citizens can buy the most or we give them the most if they want it. Or then we haul it and dump it. Would that be better than what we're doing today?
Well, just, just to let you know, we had, Brandon and I spoke about this. Um, and Holly helped. We pulled some numbers. The total cost that, that the city expends, um, to take, to dispose of the leaves and the brush is about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. So we paid a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five thousand just to dispose of it. That's, and that comes out of tipping fees and sanitation. All right. For that same price, less than that price, we had looked at, um, buying a truck and trailer to just haul it ourselves. And after year one, the truck is paid for. And then every year after that, until we replace it eight years later, is we're saving the city a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So over the course of like an eight year cycle, you're talking, you know.
So you're saying haul it ourselves to the dump forever. Okay.
So my question is grinding it and not have as much going to the dump? Or it goes, I don't know what the fees are based on. Is it based on truckload and brush and all?
It's what we do in contract haulers, yes.
Right. So basically, if you take a bunch of sawdust or mulch or chips, is it any cheaper to do it that way versus the bulk? I would think even if it wasn't, you're packing a lot more into a truck.
Right.
Taking a load at a time than you are limbs and brush. And taking that, because I see them passing on the road all the time. So I know it's gotta be inefficient in cubing out that trailer in the capacity. I just wondered if we could grind it, chip it, get rid of that, whether it's.
Could we not use the mulch?
Oh, yeah. I mean, one time we actually were, when we do Christmas tree chipping, we were allowing that mulch to build up and citizens could
come and get it. Couldn't we use it for our own grounds?
They had our three eighty-five and all that. I, I, that's what I was asking, is there's feasibility.
The thing is, is that a lot of the brush, maybe it would be a manpower thing. You kind of want to separate it. People throw out the kind of brush that they, is, is what they don't want. You know, it's not like they're throwing away, here's a nice oak tree to mulch. You know, it's like, here, here's like.
You all have picked up an oak tree in front of my house.
Let you know. Needs. And so what happens typically, and we did this in, in City Clemson and Pendleton, we all went in together. We have a, a mulching operation. Um, if you don't compost the mulch, which is to heat it up and, and break it down, if you just take the chips and use it straight out, everything under the sun grows out of it. And it's not the favorable growth that you like to see. Um, if it mulches and, and, you know, heats up and it goes through the process of composting, um, you, you could, the City Clemson Pendleton, and we all give away, Towne Central, giving away the residents for free. Um, it, 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 it does work down there, but you do need a special permit. So I mean, that's something we would have to look into, you know, because we'd be a compost operation.
Okay, let's say then rule that part out. Now let's just say we grind it and we're cubing it out. Does that save the number of trips? Manpower speeds up the manpower utilization or do we lose it grinding it up?
I mean, I, I would think, I mean, I would think that the manpower, I mean, the number of loads would go down certainly because you're changing volume just into mass. Um, the only thing that, the, the only negative I can think of is the inherent liability of now guys running a machine that could rip their arm off. That, we, they're realistically, you know, like.
This is not one that you feed in the back. I'm talking about when you take a front end loader and you pick it up and you put it in this big bowl and dump it. And it comes out the other end ground up kind of.
Oh, okay.
There's not, I mean, you could feed a person in it. If that's the kind of liability you're always talking about, it's like everything that we talk about.
You've given that thought.
He thinks, he thinks the mulch would be fine to use right after.
Remember Fargo?
Yes.
But that, I was just wondering if, if, cause I see all the trees we're removing and all the subdivisions and things like that. And I know at some time, I don't, it maybe it was a fluke, but I went to Jenkins Court and drove to the back trying to envision our new highway. And I ran into this huge mountain of trees and everything. I said, damn, now I know how Matt got rid of it. He just stuck it there. I was picking on you, but.
I think was the idea because of that, because of that stockpile, because we're having to stockpile it because we couldn't get it to the dump fast enough during the, especially during COVID.
No, it was, um, the, the place that we would take it to in Simpsonville, um, Henson's. Henson's operation goes like this. They accept brush until they are full and then they shut down and then they grind the brush. They turn it into mulch, then they start composting it. Then they, people buy it or they sell it or they get it out. And then when they clear out, they'll start all over. But so there are these periods of time.
Can't take it.
You can't take anything to them. And so then we're, we're left with the situation of we, you know, we'll stockpile. When we do stockpile, we are more efficient because every time, you know, I go to the house and Diane's got a pile down the street and it takes me two loads to, to fill up, to, to, to get it all up. My truck runs, fills up. I got a twenty, twenty-five minute ride to Henson's. Then I don't know how long I'm gonna be at Henson's, twenty, twenty-five minute ride back, load up the other part of Diane's pile, and then I gotta go back again. You know, it really does affect efficiency. Um, you know, so.
Once every new year for fun.
So the, the stockpile method, it allows us to go faster and it's, and moving forward, I think that that's the way to go. And, and I, I presented Brandon with the economics of hauling it ourselves. I, I mean, it pays for itself in year one.
All, all I'm suggesting would you look at grinding it up, mulching it, packing it into a big old truck or trailer and make one trip not to Henson's to wherever you gotta dump it.
Yeah.
I don't think we want to get into composting, but, uh, you know, I, the name you've mentioned, I bought stuff from, and I'm not a big fan of what they do either because what they call composting, lots of strange things we're growing out of.
Still marching the dump.
Yes, I get stuff out of career.
It's the same mulch we would make.
Yeah.
Right. But I'm just saying with that efficiency get us that, we're getting more neighborhoods and we're spoilt. Our citizens want us picking up limbs and everything up. And so far, we've been really, really good at biting a bullet on the extra fees. We have sister communities that were deciding they're not gonna do it anymore. They're not doing recycling and not doing this. That hadn't passed yet, but it's coming up. That's a discussion there. So that's the only thing, we need to start weaning our citizens from being spoilt like we have been for forty-seven years that I've been here. Or we try to be more efficient. And that's all I was asking. And I, I don't know, I don't know what those big grinders are kind of thing, but I just saw it at Mercy Housing and I'm like, that's gotta be a third of the size of the one we looked at down on three eighty-five, which you could have put a truck in with two people inside of it and it would all disappear.
And nothing else, it would decrease the number of lives, like you said, going down the ray. And that new truck you won't haul it.
Just a though for next year.
Good.
It's only version this year.
Um, but, 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 so any other questions on the utility crane utility truck or the jetter? Before we turn the page and go to.
So we're keeping the jatters and using them.
Yeah, we use all, you know.
And then the, if we recycle everything.
Excuse me?
The, the Ford F two fifty, we're gonna keep it.
Yeah.
What do you mean, keep the Ford F two fifty in the budget?
No, I mean, I had already asked. It's one that we already have and then we're gonna. It, I, I've already asked the question last time, so can you confirm?
Yeah, yeah. We're gonna shift some of the vehicles around.
Yeah.
All right, the next item for sewer is, would be the funds to complete the sewer work in priority areas. And that is, um, another large fall, so three hundred thousand dollars.
In perpetuity.
Yes.
But I will let you know that I worked with Aaron Fraser, Fraser Engineering. And we have submitted a rural infrastructure grant application based on our, you know, expected work in, in perpetuum, if you'd say. Um, and if we're awarded, the grant's gonna give us five hundred thousand dollars for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two. So we do that on top of the three hundred. So we.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Rural infrastructure, so RIA is, it is federal, yes.
Now, we're talking about this and especially with Fraser. It seemed like we've asked this question for an extended period of time, but at one time when we did all our rehab on our sewer systems, we want to know if we were getting the I and I actually reduced. And it was committed, I thought, to council that at the end of it. And it was committed, I thought, to council that at the end of it, they would redo those meter readings and show us that, yes, we went from this I N I to this and we accomplished what our two or three million dollars set out to do. I've never heard an answer to that. Are we doing the, are we got a flow study coming back from Fraser in the original and not in the new one?
And that was actually something we posed to Aaron Fraser this week because we had the wet weather studies that came from REWA that presented the areas of concern in Malton. And in that study, one of the basins that was identified as a basin with high I N I was the one where we spent the bond money to reline all of the mains and do the manhole work. And so Aaron is currently checking with REWA of what flow data they used from what year to see if it was before or after our work. And once we know that, and I'm pretty sure it's before our work, we're going to ask Fraser to reevaluate this stuff.
Well, one of the things I think we get caught in sometimes is the, the conditions of when they did the original had to be based on accumulated rainfall for an extended period and then when they did it. And then when we get the new ones, were they comparable?
Yeah.
And I've never heard anything coming back that answered the question, were they comparable? If I wait till there's a five, ten inch accumulation of water over the last two weeks, and I want to compare that number to when it was only three inches over two weeks, that's not fair. And for them to come back and say, well, your numbers, we spent two million dollars and your numbers didn't go down. You needed to fix this. That's not a legitimate question in my mind. In one man's opinion. So, and we're actually two men because I know there's one on the line that asked me the same question.
And when I get an answer back from Aaron, I'll, I'll forward it on for you guys.
Well, I just don't want to wait two more years.
I know.
And we spent three million dollars already or two, whatever it was we spent. And we don't know, did we accomplish what we set out to? We fixed a lot of problems. But did we do I N I? Because they're probably coming up with their new standards. And we're going to be hung with that again. Last time I checked, our sewer fee on our tax bill is still there.
Yep.
Ten dollars and whatever it is.
On your water bill.
I'm sorry, text.
Scare me. Do not scare me. What, what?
Yeah, he just made a comment and muted that.
Dale, do you have a comment?
I just said, I've never seen a report from Fraser on the I N I after we spent all this money. And we've been talking about this ever since the project was started with Fraser. So, you know, they keep saying we got, they got flow meters in certain parts of the lines and checking them. And we wanted the data to compare it with whatever we were getting from REWA or Metro or whoever. But I've never seen anything. Maybe there has been some reports given, but I have never seen any personally. So, I don't know where we've stopped our I N I or where it's still like it was or where we even taking readings. I had to agree with the mayor on that. I don't, I don't agree with him all the time, but he don't drink cheap wine. He don't drink box wine.
Based on my charter bill going up, I may have to go box wine.
YouTube TV.
All right, so if we're good with that, then more questions, then the next item would be on page one thirty-nine. And street. For the resurfacing program.
And that is just an extension of the expenditures from last year's.
Yep. That is what it is.
Yes.
Change on the budget. We changed that from a something to a transportation fee. You moved it from up there and moved it down there.
Instead of one fund, one fifty, it's one fifty-one called a transportation fund.
Capital project equipment fund. Capital project transportation fund. Went from that to that.
Because that's the other part of the sides, the two point seven bond prices. We're doing the two hundred and forty-three, which is two mils, Brandon.
Yep.
Two mils a year that we said we would be putting in there.
Got it. Good deal.
So this. Estimate cost twenty-nine forty-three. Twenty, twenty, twenty-four, two, two, forty-three.
The, we issued the bond.
Okay.
The first portion of this is we, we issued the bond last year. We haven't been able to spend all that money. We've just gotten started. So we have to put that in the budget again because we're going to be expending that money. But that was the bond money from last year. And then going forward, we're putting at least two mils a year. So that would be the two forty-three and then three hundred, three hundred, three hundred. Those will change depending on what two mils becomes in the future years, but we're putting two mils in there every year to continue.
Still getting the one thirty from state fund. Is that going in there also?
Yeah. So you know, you were, last year you created the transportation fund.
Right.
And so each year you have to approve the fund, you budgeting that, the money in that fund. So that's why that money is, it'll go down next year the more they spend. So next year, but the budget time next year, that fund will be even lower. It shouldn't be. It shouldn't be nothing. It should be just the two mils.
We're not moving this to one thirty in there. We're actually putting one thirty in some.
No, it's going in there.
It's going in the fund.
It's going in there.
So it'll be more than the two forty-three, two, whatever, two nine forty-three?
So you're saying you want to have the two mils plus the one thirty?
Well, that's what I'm asking because that was, in the past, it was a entry and it went here. And then magically somehow sometime it showed up over here. And the point was always it would for matching the other program that should be more than that.
Yeah.
So if their one, their one forty has not turned into two forty-three.
No, so.
Our two forty-three is two percent of whatever budget number.
Two mils.
Two mils, okay. So the one thirty is just an offset. So it's not really.
This is revenue coming in.
So it really doesn't cost us two forty-three. It basically cost us one thirteen. And my point was if we committed to do two mil, two forty-three, then make the one thirty go automatically. Now we're up to, you know.
Yeah, council can.
I mean, why did we ever stop? Why did council decide not to do it?
That was just a past practice. So the funding council was putting in, I think, one fifty at, at the most that I've seen it. The one fifty that was put in, the one thirty that came in was to offset that. It was counted as revenue. It was a way to keep your capital number down. That's exactly what it was. So in this instance, you're putting two mils in place. You're not relying on the one thirty. What if the one thirty doesn't come in? What if it comes in significantly less? But at this time, you can make, council can make the change to have the two mils plus the one thirty. So you can, you can increase it because it's only a projection.
Right.
The, the meal value may be less than what's projected here. So if you want to add that to that.
We're actually going to be able to spend two point nine mil this year.
Yes.
Co-Transco or King or whoever.
So the, the two point seven, the council budget last year has already been committed. So they'll expend those funds through the calendar year. Their fiscal year runs through the calendar year. So they started January first and they'll wrap up December, December twenty twenty-one. That's their fiscal year. Our fiscal year, of course, is July, is June, July. So they should wrap up that two point seven at the end of this year. By that time, we'll go ahead and let them know the next set of roads. They'll let us know the matching amount and council will approve that in the fall. And then that will go to Co-Transco and it will start that year, January first, twenty twenty-two.
With two forty-three plus whatever matching.
And the match probably will be one ninety-one because the, that's just estimates. It has, they're not going to kick that in. So it'll be one ninety-one probably.
So we need the one thirty left alone. Have you got it?
You know, right now it's just, it's just, it's just going into revenue. It's just going to revenue. But you can add, council can do that now and they're like.
I mean, we're making a heck of a dent in our roads and our notifications. So we need to keep it. I don't cover that. I just wanted to be sure I understood it.
Trash cans.
Did you follow all that?
It did after a while. He confused me.
It confused me for years.
Trash cans on page one forty, which I'm a fan of. Some aren't. So forty to forty-five pairs of cans can be purchased for that line item, dollar amount to make all of the trash cans throughout our city consistent.
We can stay with the fifty-five gallon drums with the line.
We're just going to get a bags and hang them on a nail.
Okay, so moving to page one forty-one now. I opened a check mark. Any major headaches, concerns?
Very, very well needed.
Head four. Terry zipped it earlier, so I'm giving you one more chance.
So to replace all of them, will we take two years, replace all of them in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three?
No, that's got to be changed. They're all going to be bought in twenty twenty-two. There's not twenty twenty-three.
So it's ninety thousand total?
No, no.
Fifty thousand, okay, that's.
Yes, I have.
Thinking to myself, I need to get the trash can making business.
No, I mean, our city's looking too good.
Yeah. That's all we have for representation tonight because then we get into recreation.
I'm prepared to discuss recreation.
Okay. All right.
So the.
That's where I can roll through.
I'm sorry for you. Fifty K at Sunset Park and then next year forty K at Springfield Park.
It's fifty K to this year done.
All parks, not just, okay, so all parks. All right, spread for forty. Trash cans at parks.
When will we, when will we be buying these? Since you can. Only reason I ask that, steel's going up right now. I know. So that could go up.
Yeah, most capital purchases is kind of weight.
I'd say January, February.
Seventy, thirty.
I don't jump on that for just because of that reason. It can go up. It could double in six months.
In the big scheme of things. All right, then recreation, we have on page one forty-one, the shades for the sports center. Which the shades that are in there currently are original to the building. So I think that is a very good purchase for the estimated eight thousand dollars. Any questions on the shades? If not, then we have the carpet for the fit kids, fit kids room and the offices upstairs of the sports center.
I'm assuming that's the fit kids and the two offices downstairs and rec upstairs office. So both downstairs and upstairs.
Yeah, we certainly hope so. I mean, that was a concerted investment.
Yeah, because the fit kid doesn't incorporate the two other offices.
Correct.
So.
Yeah.
Those three areas and then one, two, three.
Three offices.
Three and a half upstairs.
Was that carpet last? Or is that original?
A lot of traffic.
Can't believe that with kids.
Couple of years ago, we actually replaced squares in the sports center area and then three guys were dropping away.
Ah, yeah.
Perpetual was dropping.
I was going to say, you heard me, that was coming. Probably true, though. Some of it. Come back if needed. The other portion is the senior said, the senior center with the partitions to divide those rooms off. So this will currently replace the, well, it says the project would replace those on the main floor. Those.
According.
Click the, yeah, those are according doors. I'm in, I'm in senior center now.
Yeah, I guess so.
But we have those doors. You want to talk about that first?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll come back to the senior center. The automatic front doors at the sports center. For easier access in and out. I think the mayor asked last time if it included.
Both sets.
Both sets. And Bart said it did.
These are easier to remove or they open bigger so you can drive equipment into it easier.
Lord said that they would open.
And then allow.
And hang the house. Yep. Which I'm surprised that cost is that low. Anything on that, Mayor? All right, and that all for the sports center? Yep. Well, let's go back to the senior center then with the according doors. More than our automatic front doors.
We'll double check on the cars.
Yeah, those, those sliding partitions and everything. When they have presentations from the, I think the elderberries. We can open door and go, here's that.
He's actually tapped that there. Are you dressed up being somebody else in a performance?
I, I haven't done it in every year, no.
That's all right. I'm sure those prices are good, Brandon, but. That makes sense. Yeah.
You know, from all of them, unless you had a birthday party, it seems.
You just don't want to get the new ones that have tracks on the floor. If you don't want tracks for the seniors to have to step over.
Now your children can have a birthday party or maybe they'll just have Christmas with Santa. Breakfast with Santa. All right, so that takes us out of the sports center and the senior center, I believe, and takes us to the ballpark for the renovation of the press box. Which I think is greatly needed.
Needs love.
Yep, yep. And then we have the pavement at Springfield Park.
It's all the part that's up. I pulled everything. Has the parking lot Springfield ever been dug? I don't think so. I know it's been sealed and painted and.
Well, we passed it down there when we put in the new shelf. Yeah, a couple of years ago, just patched that and sealed it.
It's never been dug up and replaced.
Yeah.
Other than the tennis courts. That was repaved, I think.
It's now a parking area.
At the top.
Yeah, the top parking lot was tennis.
Upper level up there of park.
Now we need to make it pickleball.
But we paved it.
For parking.
It needed to be paved for.
Yeah, if we can get people to park here.
As they want to get out fast, so they park on the street.
All right, that wraps up Capitol. The easiest Capitol I've ever had.
Sunset needed love.
Yeah.
Have y'all seen the new pavement and the striping up the senior center?
I drove by it, yeah.
Yeah, I rode by it too, and I love the little picnic tables that are out at the cabin. Have y'all seen those? Yes, they're so cool.
Have we heard from Don when he thinks? Okay, well, I thought he was still shooting.
Somebody asked me about that just yesterday.
Okay, Michael said he would. Kind of leave it up to us to see how far we got tonight, so I think there's some interest in going back and looking at some departmental. Is that something, what time is it?
Sunday morning.
Do you want to entertain tonight, or do you want to have a, another, one more final meeting? And that's to all everybody.
He scared you for the next fifteen, anyways, I'm, I'm good to say.
Okay.
Matter of fact, some of my questions might be handled offline. With Holly or Brandon, so not bother the whole group. So if I just didn't mention, didn't involve.
Can't get my spreadsheet back, Holly, so everyone.
You answered the inmate question I had there. We didn't put anything, well, we'll save that. Uh, I definitely wanted to do that, but I was on some way to the line item, cause probably need a discussion, because that's a hot button of mine.
Which was that?
I mean, you know, just to prepare you, the PW Street, we kind of agree, we're gonna have a plan to give in to some of the ditching and cleaning like that. And PW Street comes with a zero. Expense budget increase, so that tells me we're not doing anything in the ditches. Cause you told me we needed three or four hundred thousand dollars to do a program for ditches. So that's a discussion we need to have, because if we needed it and we agree we're gonna do it, but it's not in the budget, that tells me we're not doing it.
Yeah, so on the, on the drainage, so Matt, Matt and his folks are cleaning out drainage ditches. Uh, an extra program to have folks solely focus on cleaning out ditches. You would need two employees and a, and a trash truck. The cost for that is nothing, two hundred thousand dollars. In order to have the budget work the way it is now, because those are recurring costs, with the exception of the truck. The employees are recurring costs. Without going into the fund balance, the city's fund balance, there was no way to make it work. The money just wasn't there to make it work, unless council would want to go into its fund balance. The, the, the budget as presented, as recommended, did not rely on the fund balance at all. But if council would like to, the funding is there in fund balance. To cover those costs. I will keep in mind, it's a recurring cost, so once you do it, it's gonna be there every year. And right now, we have, we don't have any revenue enhancements that are occurring. Be it tax increases or whatnot, to increase the revenue that's coming in. And our revenue, as we see it projecting out over the next few years, still remains low to my. There's not, it hasn't been a significant jump in revenue. So projecting out the revenue and looking at the expenditures is extremely tight. Unless council wants to go into the fund balance to make up for the adjustment. I didn't wanna recommend that to council, um, because it's a recurring cost. But should council want to, funding is there, that would be a decision that council can make. I've talked to Matt, uh, he's prepared to have a crew that's dedicated to cleaning out ditches. The cost of that, though, for two people dedicated to ditches only. Cleaning out ditches and having a truck, it's about two hundred thousand dollars. That doesn't include the expenses for fuel, um, weed eating, maintaining ditches. So that, that can be done. It's just, if council wants to do it, we'll, we'll make sure the money is there to do it. It, it's just not in the amount of money that we have coming in now. It, uh, right now, the only personnel we're adding is in police, but they had a mileage increase.
Fire, fire, fire.
Fire, they had a mileage increase. The other person that's moving from part-time to full-time, they're being funded out of H and X, or a different revenue source. The only way the fund public works is you pretty much have a layer in taxes. Uh, the general fund. And, I mean, I'm, I'm, Holly, you, you know, we went through the budget, it's really, I mean, that, that's why you see in some of your department budgets, they've actually been a decrease. Because the level of service that the city provides is, is, is remaining the same. But the expenditures continue to go up every year. Revenues just aren't, aren't keeping up with the expenditure trend. Um, so certainly can be done. Should council have to do, it can be done, but the funding source would be the fund outs, general fund outs.
I, I guess what I'd, I'd be interested in, how much can we do with our current level, you already wanna do some of it, how much can we do? We know the hot buttons, uh, the citizens group pretty much identified certain areas that were hot buttons. They also bring up over and over, infrastructure. So, we just saw a five million dollar bridge today, we saw, uh, Ridgeway Station, you know, we see. Property over on, uh, another road and moving different things like that, so. If you take it from a citizen point of view and look, we see all this new stuff going in and all this growth that we're doing. And they see nothing but potholes, water flow that comes across their yards, cause there's no ditch there and all that, you know, the hot buttons kinda thing. And that's, that's tough to, for us to step up to and, you know, they're saying our infrastructure's been ignored for fourteen years. Yet, look at all the new stuff you're doing, you're putting apartments everywhere, you're putting townhomes everywhere, you're cutting down all the trees. So all that water is coming down again, it's coming down the east bowler, and it's full of potholes already, you're not doing anything about that. We hear this everywhere we go, and I don't have an answer, you know. A quantifiable answer, how many ditches can it do? The zero in on one, Bishop Heights, there's one, two, three roads there that different houses no longer have ditches. They're, I hadn't written it lately, their catch basin lid is below grade, so it's not catching any water. So the water is to this yard, then going across the street, then coming back across the street. And I'd show you down here on Pinehurst, things like that. That's the kind of things they're asking for, and I'm seeing no increase, and, but we got money for all this other stuff, and I know it's fund balance, and that'd be up to council. I, you know, I, as Carol certainly said, I'm not a proponent of increasing personnel, cause it is recurring. And over and over and over kinda thing, so can we contract it out, and how much could we get done then, but then the money's the same, so if I had to go into fund balance and get two hundred thousand dollars. And spend it on a contractor, and I got a quantifiable quantity out of it, and I know it can't be exactly seven yards or whatever, but from that standpoint. I think you mentioned today, two men in a truck may be cheaper than two employees in a truck. With all the liability that comes along with it and flags and pylons and stuff.
And, and Matt's folks can do this. They're tracking it now, the areas, the amount of, uh, feet that they clean out on the ditch and the hot spots, they're going to hit those spots. And they really just started tracking that in December of last year. So those spots will be hit. I don't, I don't want you to think that nothing's being done. They're going to do that, but if you want to have a full service program, if council wants to have a full service program. Then there's an investment that need, that has to be made, and if it's personnel, it's personnel. It's not say it can't be done, it's just that if council commits to doing it, there's a cost there that they will incur every year. That just may be pressure on other areas in your budget.
What about if you were to go through a temp agency for two people? You know, they're not the ones doing the ditch, but you're swapping somebody for somebody else. Is that something you could do then if, you know, the budget picks up heavily and look at bringing them onboard full-time? If it doesn't, then you're, then okay, we deal with what we have, the cards were dealt.
Yeah, so I think right now we're paying about four grand a month for four temps. Um, so another two thousand a month for temps, but then again, a temporary employees, they have to wanna do the work. So, um, it, it can be done. It, at, at, at this point, if, if council will, will do it, Matt's folks will do it. And then the funding, there's a, there's a cost there.
Right.
If council's okay with the cost, and when, when you approve your budget and put the cost in there, Matt's folks will do it. Whether you want two men, three, they will do it.
Brandon.
Yes.
I don't worry very, I've never seen it, maybe I missed it, but I know every piece of property in the city pays a stormwater fee to Greenville County. And the last word I got, all that money goes to administrative cost. It doesn't go to any project, it goes for administrative costs for engineering and all this for Greenville County. Now, are we getting our fair share of the money, or are we just giving it all to them and they saying, oh, we're doing all your stormwater assessments, we're doing all your engineering for you and all this stuff, so. No, there's no money left for do maintenance of your ditches and things for stormwater.
So the funding that Greenville County collects, city has no say so in how that funding is used. They don't send us any funding from the, the fee they collect with their stormwater. There's varying stories, uh, from that staff on how that funding is used, I reviewed their budget. It appears that it's used in to fund a variety of things, but nothing in the city of Martin.
But is that, is that illegal?
Yeah, they, they do review our, uh, stormwater, uh, developments, so that is a part of it, and we're a co-permittee of the MS four program, uh, they collect the funny, funding, they levy the fee, um, it's legal what they're doing.
But it's all administrative work.
It work. Well, they also, they also send people out when they, when there's new construction, they do monitor new, they just don't monitor old. I did have a conversation with somebody at the apartment complex up here and just discussed what, what they did operationalized. And that was a son employee of that department, but he basically said, well, we do all the, if there's new, new, uh, building going on, we approve the, for the permits. Forget the, the name of the permit, but we review that, and we will come to site, we'll inspect sometimes. But he, but there was nothing as far as work, physical, you know, mechanical work that they did, it's all administration and inspection.
Aren't they also responsible for the maintenance of the, uh, stormwater retention ponds and things to make sure that they are maintained?
We maintain our own stormwater detention and retention ponds. They're on a, a routine cleaning and mowing and cleaned out schedule.
The city owns.
Just the city, I ain't talking about all, I'm talking about everybody else's shopping centers and all.
They don't do anything like that, they inspect them manually, they say. And they don't, they don't do, they don't do anything for the other cities, from what I understood you had from the conversation.
They don't.
Well, what I'm saying, there's a criteria to maintain those retention ponds. Are they making sure that the property owners are maintaining them? Are you see a lot of them overgrown?
No, I mean, that's, that's a part of their program, uh, you know, whether or not they enforce it or the level that they enforce it at. Is, is, is that program.
From my understanding, it's new. Once it's, once they bless it. I mean, I'm guessing if they got maybe a complaint and they wanted, had to go inspect something, but I don't think they voluntarily go inspect anything after it's new.
Their, their charter says that.
They've never inspected any of our reasons.
Yeah, that was, that was, I had a conversation with a person, they didn't, and then he said, oh, once, once they're up and running, we're good. That's kinda his attitude, I can't remember the exact words he used, but that's what I got from the conversation.
So if they fill in with silt and brush and the overflow and it runs somebody's property, they're out of the picture.
Yep. I, I guess you maybe could file a complaint and come give them a ticket, but if, but they don't do, they don't volunteer to do anything, they're not gonna go and check it on their own.
But as far as the city staff cleaning out ditches, um, they're doing it, and, and I, I, I know I'm putting it in the admin report. The, the amount of feet, linear feet that they're cleaning out. Increasing that frequency that they're doing it. That, that, I mean, you, you require, you gonna require the, the staff dedicated to doing it.
Well, if you can report that, I, I'd like to see the locations of where they're at kinda thing, be sure they're the hotspots that we're here in the hotspots we're at, we're addressing this. And see what we get for, what he's doing with the staff before I go into the fund, or I would recommend going into the fund balance, which I know Holly don't run the fund balance, so.
Well, and it's a reoccurring cost, so that's.
Yeah, but can we contract it out? That's gonna be a two men in a truck versus three city employees in a truck and a excavator, backhoe, whatever you use.
They throw a ton truck in, and we, the, the, what we've kind of talked about and cost and priced out, we just use soft cost analysis when it came to using all the other equipment from other departments, just to keep the overhead down.
You know, that was part of discussions I wanted to have when we got it.
About making it work.
But.
What may be helpful if. Because right now, we, we, we have, our cleanout program is, you know, Matt giving direct and his staff taking and doing it. Um, maybe codifying that, or at least having something formal.
Schedule.
The schedule, or, it, it, it just explains what is occurring and how often it's done. Presenting that and let council see that and make adjustments to it or make recommendations. And so as we continue to plan in upcoming fiscal years, we can add things to it, to improve it. To improve the frequency that, that they're being cleaned out, um, actually being able to map out areas that need, that need to be addressed, like Bishop Heights. And that, that may help as well.
But what? What are we gonna lose? What would be the frequency of that, cause these guys have a job that they're doing already, that they're gonna be pulled from to go.
Right.
Clean these ditches out, so.
I've been working to put more stormwater work into their routine, cause it, historically, it's, it's, it's only, it's been reactive, reactive maintenance.
Right.
So, we have, and I, I can share, then by our next media, I can get you guys copy, we have guys are opening up and cleaning stormwater catch basins, we're cleaning out ditches, we still do this reactive, they're actually cleaning the stormwater basins, mowing them. We're, we're putting that into the workload. The, the problem is, is street department's the smallest of all the departments of public works, it's four guys. You know, and they're still responsible for all the street signs, and we make every one of those. The paving, they've been doing crap, uh, crack filling, we just did the Forester Creek neighborhood, uh, we did paving there today as well. They also have to cut back all the vegetation, maintain the right of ways. And then, oh, assortment of our jobs. So i- it's, it really is a balance and, and trying to not have a loss of service, but while implementing as much stormwater work into their schedule.
Keep in mind, at some point, the, the recommendation will come to increase personnel in the public works department. And the way the city is growing, the amount of brushing leaves that a man picked up. The, the new housing that's coming onboard or coming online, the amount of trash cans or cycling cans that will need to be set. The amount of upkeep of the streets or parks, public works, personnel will need to increase at a point, because at some point you reach where it's maxed out. Your folks are there every day, they're doing something, and your other services start to suffer to address something else. So a recommendation will be coming soon on increasing your public works, and it's not just public works. A lot of my other departments have to have an increase as well. In personnel, it's just, the city is growing. It's not necessarily population, it's the complexity of the organization. Becoming more of a larger city, doing more complex things. It's, it's not just, you know, police, fire and parks, is is, is becoming more complex organization, more complex operations, and that requires staff.
We talked before about putting in a hookup fee for new houses being built for maybe, I don't know, people come mauling the first time. One-time fee, cause since we don't see that, that revenue until the next year, correct?
You know, like a development, like an impact fee, that's correct.
And so we're gonna put that and put it a hundred percent towards stormwater. I don't know, it was fifty bucks a house, a hundred, what, what do we, I mean, some is reasonable. I don't know, it was fifty bucks a house, a hundred, what, what do we, I mean, some is reasonable, that's not going to freak anybody out. But that might be one way to generate enough funds to get that without a tax on everybody who's already living here.
Yeah, so the, uh, the impact fee, um, it, it would have to be done by ordinance. But the first step in that is having a impact fee study. And it's the funding you can use, the, what you can use the revenues for from the impact fee have to be tied to your CIP. So, let's say it's a new recreation building that you have your CIP. Those funds can go towards helping pay for that, so it has to be in the CIP. Is, is, that's what the fees are used for, future capital improvements. So, it's on to all developers, it's a set fee, there's a, a formula that's used to develop that fee. Those revenues are captured and stored in a fund, and those revenues only can be expended for your CIP items. Um, so.
Personnel costs.
Not, not, that's not your personnel cost, so it.
You can shift something from somewhere to, to that.
You, you could, you could, but you just want to be careful with it. Because it's, it's, it's set by ordinance.
You can't, you can't, you, you cannot say it's a stormwater fee. It is.
Because Greenwood County is already charging that fee, you, you, you're levying that fee, the county's already doing it, you can't charge them twice.
Double taxation.
And a anti-flooding fee.
We are growing by leaps and bounds, we heard it today, type thing. Even if you walk this hallway and you try to find someone to help you do something, an administrative assistant, just, and they not only help Brandon out, but help Ben out and help me out on different little things. I mean, we're trying to get this K O A kind of thing, trash pickup again, started, and there's nobody to horseshoe it. Nobody to see that it's going to go, there's just one little minute thing, but that, as much as it pains me to say, we're going to have to increase personnel.
Then, you know, you're going to have to increase something else when you do that.
I've said that for three years, first years. Yeah. It's coming, we know it's coming.
Whether it's a millage or if it's a public works fee, I mean, they're all a tax in the eyes of the residents, but, um, you just can't keep the standard of free public works, free trash pickup. You, you just can't keep it up at this level, at the rate we're growing, with the revenues coming in.
We build all these apartments and townhomes, we build all these, all that money's coming in, and what's the city doing with it? You know, and try to explain to them, it's almost a break even.
Well, first of all, I was going to say, what's all that money, because we hadn't seen it yet, but, yeah. Money's, I mean, yeah, we all know where the money comes from.
The, the portfolio of services that the city's from, the, the city of Malden provides, is outweighing a lot of cities that are larger. That, that have more resources. I mean, the, the lowest millage, city of Malden, only city without a public works fee in the county. The mi-, the fire millage, even though they had an increase, is still one of the lowest. Lowest sewers, and so it, the council has done a magnificent job of being able to provide a high level of service with keeping the millage low and keeping your fund balance high. So, there are a lot of other cities that look to Malden, and I hear it all the time, how are y'all doing it? Why are y'all, why y'all ain't raising taxes? Why y'all don't have a public works fee?
It's a super secret.
Yeah. How you doing? Yes, but we have good industrial that pay a lot.
Yeah.
Um, we have commercial that pays a lot, and they are actually carrying the bulk of our budget, your commercial and your industrial. Is, I mean, they're carrying the bulk of it, not property owners.
Not those pretty properties that carry it.
That's why we need to move out that way.
Pretty much running out of real estate inside the city of Malden without going outward. And pretty much can't go that way.
But your money's a plant that seed, because that's a conversation that's going to have to be had.
Absolutely. There's only one or two years it can be had in.
Oh, one other thing you could do is.
Well, it's a matter of opinion, I mean, it is what it is.
You could put out, here's the, here's the budget, you can either, we can reduce this, Plan A, Plan B, and let people vote. Increase the milli-, you know, whatever the millage here's it is, or we can get rid of these extra services we're doing.
That might increase voter turnout.
When was the last time the millage was increased? Twenty two, uh, two thousand and nine or twenty ten, see? People shouldn't complain if it goes up a little bit, I mean.
Depends, depends what the bill is.
Yeah, there is nobody but, uh, city folks online.
Yes.
You know, I mean, seriously, in order for us to make Malden better and, and beauty and, and all this other stuff and desirable for people, we may, i- i- it's going to take money, and, and if we never, ever raise taxes, eventually, the city's going to be hurting, because things are going to outgrow the money that's coming in.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the ten-year CIP, the first two, three years, heavy. Is because of years of kind of kicking it down the line. So, that's why you kind of see, heavy at the first two or three years, to kind of get up to where it should be. But there's a cost there.
So, levy a tax on people who, out of, from out of state into Malden, just, just.
And as a side note, Mr. Gerrod. Woo, David.
Yes.
Um, FYI, you know, this is, um, my favorite time of year, night, and with business licenses. And, um, I made the comment several times this week that in doing business licenses all over the state of South Carolina, um, and having clients who have businesses here, how, I wouldn't say low, but, um, just say for a restaurant, let's just say a restaurant industry, our, our rate is lower than most cities in the upstate. Um, so when I hear, huh?
Makes sense.
Well, when I hear, you know, the, the negative things, which that reputation, we're still trying to get back, that you and I talk about from five, six, seven years ago, um, that, about us not being business friendly, which we're, we are, but we're trying to get over that bad reputation, and having high tax, it's just not true. So, um, if folks look at the rates, they would see that our rates are really low compared to other cities in the upstate and the whole state as far as that goes. That's my soapbox, I know I say it every year, but it's true.
They're folks that live in Greenwood County, that pay more to live outside of Malden than living in the city of Malden. Because if you live in Greenwood County and you want your trash picked up, you're paying sixty dollars a quarter. City of Malden, you're not paying that.
A restaurant in the city of Anderson is one point six five for every thousand over two thousand, here is point nine eight.
There you go.
And we still don't have a lot of good restaurants. That's not my opinion, I'm repeating what I read or hear.
And I was trying to thank you, because I've done Richland, Lexington, all of those counties, Anderson's really, really high. But the other ones are still in that, we're point nine, they're in that point three five range.
Did you hear where the governor?
I mean, one point three five.
You were, you were where the governor left and went to lunch today at?
Where'd he go?
Ben, would you like to tell her?
Did he go over to, to, um, Jack Charles?
Jay Peters.
Yeah.
He's drunk and passed out by now. He's in the box crying.
What? I'm sorry, I was trying to listen, sir.
Sucking on that cigar.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. No, actually, I was on the porch and I just came in, but I was trying to listen from afar. What was, what, I apologize, what was the counter question?
He was asking you to tell me where the governor had lunch today, and I smiled and I said, was it ever at Jack Charles' property?
Uh, yes, ma'am, it was at Jay Peters'.
Yay. I hope he enjoyed.
Recommendation of Chief Miller.
Yes, it was. Chief Miller encouraged them to eat lunch in, uh, Malden.
Good for him, thank you.
Thank you.
Back to the porch.
I'm, I'm, I'm hanging in.
I'm heading there.
I break out the brandy.
All right, well, in closing, staff does a tremendous job in keeping everything tight and keeping the services that we keep and being professional, and I, for one, appreciate that, and I think all of us sitting here appreciate that. So, that being said, I guess we will meet again next Thursday, same place, same time. Um, it should be a pretty quick wrap-up of.
Where everybody goes, I'd just like to say congratulations on the Bridgeway Station thing with the thing with Phil Hughes and everybody participated, Taft, the mayor, and everybody from the city, I thought they did a great job on the video I saw.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you, Dale, it was very nice.
We were very excited, I think, the announcements and the publicity and everything else we got. Especially with Senator Graham's statement is, uh, in a few years, people say, well, where's Greenwood, it says, right there next to that town of Malden.
Yeah, I saw that.
A great, great statement, so.
I thought you did a good job on the video and everything.
Exciting times for Malden, and, uh, as I said, this council, past council administrations have put us where we're at today. And, uh, it's going to be exciting, in one man's opinion.
I think in lots of people's opinion, the reaction is good.
So, appreciate this council, we've, uh, I use the term and I get corrected on them, the diversity on this council is tremendous. Uh, various age groups represented, socioeconomic status, uh, professional careers and things like that, and our staff. And I've never been prouder to be in the city of Malden, so I appreciate this council, including the arguments and snide remarks, and what I could do, ingest, ingest, but, uh, I'm having fun this year.
Getting there.
Not so much.
Getting there.
Thank you to Brandon and Holly. And their staffs. And I had, and I get the biggest kick out of picking on that.
I'm here every day.
Yes, ma'am. I'm booked, so, um, so nothing, I've called ladies' night at T D K, that's a very important night.
Y'all have a good evening, I'll see you sometime next week.
She's having that thing for, for bus-, for female business owners. I just love them as people, I'm not crazy about their, I mean, I like that, their merlot, that blackberry merlot.
Yeah.
Okay, because that's about.
You're very urgent.